Okay, so this is the appointment subcommittee for Wednesday, October 16th, maybe?
That's correct.
We have the appointment subcommittee, we also have Councilor Dan Rist. What are you called now, HR?
Well, not until the charter changes, she's still a personnel.
Personnel Director, Jane Heckowitz, the mayor, and the candidate, Jennifer. Is it Galant or Gannon?
Galant.
Galant. Are you French?
My husband, yes.
Okay, awesome. Do we have any minutes from the last?
Yes. I was gonna ask you what date it was, wasn't it?
It was probably the 2nd, October 2nd. Would be my doing math.
Yes.
That's what it would be.
Yes.
Okay, I will take the motion to approve the minutes of October 2nd.
So, 2nd?
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Anything else on anyone's mind? Anything you'd like to talk about, mayor?
No.
Okay. Alright, then we will get right to it. So, what we're gonna be discussing this evening is the appointment to treasurer of Jennifer Galant with a term expiration of 12/31/2021. I have some questions, I don't know if you have any questions, if any of the other folks have questions. So, what I think would be helpful is if you just kind of start and talk to us about your background and your experience. We'll start with that.
Okay. Well, as you can see in my resume, I have a strong financial background, mainly in banking. But, being a top-level employee in banking, I've seen pretty much all sides of finance, you know, from investing to cash management, you know, and I've done, I started out as a teller and worked my way up, so I've seen all of the different areas of accounting and how they kind of flowed. And, I find that banking is, like, I was thinking about it the other night, and to me, being the CFO at a bank relates to being a treasurer of a city on a smaller scale.
Awesome.
Well, because, as the CFO, you're balancing all of the banks' bank statements accounts, you're reporting cash balances to the CEO, and together you're making informed decisions about investments, rates, you know, different ways to draw business or bring money in. Or, if you're flushed with liquidity and you want money to go out, then, you know, you have those conversations as well. And actually, in Westfield, I worked very closely with the treasurer, the prior treasurer, Megan, and then the current one, now Matt, who's really a good guy, he came in and didn't have any municipal experience, he was CPA. So, him and I really worked closely together as he was trying to kind of get his footing in the municipal world. And, you know, I found that a lot of the questions that he had or things that he struggled with, even though he was a CPA, I was able to relate to based on, obviously, I had been there as the assistant auditor, so I had some experience in Westfield, but I could also relate them to what I had done in banking. And, you know, the processes were very similar. You know, I don't know if that sounds odd, but I just found that as I went through, you know, I was like, like, this is, this is what I've done all my life, you know what I mean?
Yes.
And it just, it felt like, it reminded me of being the CFO of the city.
Okay, sure. When you, relative to your experience as the auditor in Westfield, so, and you talked a little bit about it, you worked with the treasurer, and what was the gentleman's name? Matt, was he the assistant auditor, the assistant treasurer, or did I completely get the name wrong?
No, his name, yeah, no, his name was Matt. When I first, when I first came on there, our treasurer was Megan, and right now her last.
Kane.
Kane, thank you. And she actually ended up leaving to stay home with her kids. And so, they filled the position with Matt Barnes.
Okay.
Who was the CPA, so he's the treasurer.
Okay.
And, I'm sorry, so what was the question?
So, what was my point? I just wanted to, so, do you find, and I think you kind of just touched on it, so, there are symmetries, similarities between the auditor role and the treasurer role, and I think even as I was doing my research, a lot of the state descriptions of those roles overlap, depending upon the city. So, I guess what I want to ask you is what do you see in your role in Westfield, how that would differ in this role? What would be the things that make you kind of think about this new role as a different role than what you have today?
Right. Well, as assistant auditor, I, a lot of what the treasurer's office does filters then to auditing, and then auditing performs the accounting journals and things of that nature. But that being said, you know, the treasurer goes through, balances the bank statements, comes up with their cash balance, and then it flows to me in auditing where I do the cash balance in Munis, the software, and then we need to tie those together, you know what I mean? So, there are, there are many similarities between the two, but the more of the processes happen in treasurers, whereas auditing is more a function of checking what's coming down and making sure it matches what's in the system, it matches what we have, you know, if there's bond payments being made, are they being applied properly, principal interest?
Is it kind of like a quality check on the work that's being done on the input-output side of the equation?
Pretty much, it's a quality check of every department when we're auditing, you know. So, and I mean, you do, like, treasurers collect receipts, obviously, they take in the cash and that sort of thing. So, then, the receipts flow to the auditor in paper form, not money.
Right, they don't touch money.
No.
Yep.
And then we put them in and balance the receipts and that type of thing.
So, you have that, you as an auditor have to understand the process that you are auditing, ergo, the treasurer and collector type of role.
Exactly.
You have to be pretty familiar with that.
Yes, yes, yes.
Okay. Do you guys have any questions?
Sure, I can comment.
Did you say?
I have a few, but only one.
What about Joe?
So, I guess I was going through our responsibilities, and you know, one of them is preparation and issuance of municipal bonds. Have you been involved with any of that?
Yes, actually, when I was on the, I never sat in on bond council, I wasn't involved in necessarily the decisions behind them, but as far as the numbers, they all flowed to us. And, in Westfield, the mayor was, any big projects or anything that we wanted to fund via bond, it was something that the department heads met about auditing, treasurer, you know, the whole nine, we all had to weigh in on how, how we felt it would affect finances and things of that nature. So, from the perspective of the actual, you know, talking with the financial advisor, you know, that was what I did actually in banking, in investing, and loans and things of that nature. But, with the bonds in the city, it was, it was more of an after the fact, only because the treasurer was the one who dealt with bond council and the financial advisor and, you know, taught the rate and the term and those.
So, the treasurer is the person who does, to me, it sounds like the rubber hits the road kind of stuff.
Yes.
But you haven't necessarily done, but you've overseen it on some level.
I had, I've never, I mean, I've never done the bond process from start to finish in Westfield, but it's very similar to any type of financial instrument you're gonna see in the financial industry, in banking, you know what I mean? Like, it's just a different, different type.
So, how about budgeting? Have you, like, I know one of the responsibilities is the city budget, haven't done much of that in this.
Yes, yes. This past year, I was in meetings with the, in Westfield, the mayor meets with all of the department heads. We level funded initially, then we have meetings to talk about changes and those sorts of things. And I was in with every department head, I, you know, talked with the mayor and the department heads about where cuts could be made, or, you know, what absolutely needed to try to stay on the budget, you know, if something's been being pushed off for a few years, and now it's a question of, okay, this software's not supported anymore, so now we're risking, you know, liability. So, yes, I've been very thoroughly entrenched in the budgeting process, and all the way down to budget entry into the system.
Okay. There's one question for the mayor then. So, from our previous setup of a financial advisor slash treasurer slash collector versus what we have now, how will the workflow differ in your mind? Like, did it used to all, did the budget, did bonding all come from Melissa and Adam or?
So, one would say, and it happens a lot at municipalities, and I would ask, you know, Jane can speak to the detail, the finance director, treasurer, collective model that we had was really formed to get Melissa the salary, so we wouldn't lose her, quite honestly. I don't see a need at all for a finance director. Our financial advisor at Unibank, Lori Lombard, is just amazing, and actually came out, met with the finance team, where the assistant treasurer found out that transfers and cash management and whatnot was actually something that Lori did, it was part of her job, we just never took advantage of it.
Lori?
Lori Lombard, who is our, our financial advisor.
Okay.
Unibank's team, I've met with at length. The people that we interface with on the city level have all been auditors or treasurers in municipalities and have gone to private center. So, and not exclusively treasurers and not exclusively auditors. When we come to the bond process, this city has never actually had bond council sit on those meetings, it's been the telephone call, and I just changed bond council, so it's a face-to-face meeting, they've actually just been here, met with Val, myself, along with Lori Lombard. So, the idea of the oversight of bond council or bond process is truly taken care of by our financial advisor. We've already talked to them about how to structure the bond, where there's a break to do other financials, that's completely, I mean, while certainly the treasurer, and really the auditor, I mean, when we were fighting for that upgrade in the bond council, our financial advisors were in the room, I was in the room, Melissa was in the room as treasurer, Val was there as auditor, and Lori, our assessor, was there. And certainly, the preparation of the document came out of the treasurer's, you know, office, but it, it is a team effort and a lot of it, it's just, a $50 million bond, a $10 million bond is so complicated, there is no one in City Hall, quite honestly, especially this city, we should never hire somebody with that experience unless they just feel like making a treasurer's salary. I mean, it's just not expertise the city should have, and we would want somebody with a whole insurance. The other two important, you know, things around bonds and cash management and payment schedules, I mean, in particular, is that it's a lot of management. I mean, our small finance team and audit team, you know, are small and extremely competent with the skills. How they work as a group and management style, I would look from a treasurer, I mean, is really important, and quite honestly, it's been a detriment at different times in the past. I would remind too, this subcommittee, that really the person who put together the very early budgets, and really, I would say 17 years of budgets, was a man who knew the city inside and out, but absolutely did not have experience as a treasurer or an auditor, nor a degree in accounting or finance. And we are here today safe and sound.
So, you feel confident that in this team approach, any deficits she might have, kind of the treasurer's side, would be compensated with others?
And we've seen that now. You know, I mean, I brought in a consultant to just help with the year-end, and while he had a lot of experience and was a higher-level consultant, I mean, the grunt work, and he said this to me over and over again, he's like, you know, "I'm here to make sure you land the year-end okay with DOR so you can get free cash certified," but they were down at treasurer since May of last year. I mean, when I'm talking about competent skills, I truly mean it, but the finance, the finance team in audit, I mean, extremely competent, but management is key, it's a department head position and management to really support. The other is, when you talk about outdated software, we're using KBS, which we chose because it was cheaper, and you could probably count the municipalities who use that software on two hands, and one way or another, whether we want to or not, we need to switch to something that also brings down that school money, other than extensive Excel spreadsheets that Val, Hadal, and the treasurer in Emory, I mean, we're working a lot on Excel spreadsheets because all of the different software doesn't talk to each other. And, you know, Jen's experience with making those transitions is formidable, and she sits on the other table and has, in a credit union situation and a banking situation, and she knows what cities and towns need to do to keep a bond rating and keep the bucks floating.
Are you done? So, I'm very happy to hear you have a lot of bonding experience. I do like having a second pair of eyes, that's what you'll be, with all the people there, you're gonna see what they did before, and God, I hope you ask questions, why did they do that? Even if it's because you don't know, educationally, I hope you will do that.
Absolutely.
Because a guy like me, I've been here a long time, and I've been chair of the Finance Committee a long time, but there's still things that Melissa was right over my head with, it wasn't her fault, I just sometimes, and don't ever try to explain unfunded liabilities and retirement stuff. Don't ever try to explain that to me. But I want to ask you, one of my questions is, are you familiar with that particular issue?
Yes, I am.
Okay, because that, to me, is so hard to understand, I understand why we have them, but it's hard to figure out, how do we, how do we fix this? I mean, it's, never mind, it's just hard. So, given your municipal experience, you do have a lot of knowledge of state and municipal finance laws, I assume, because we rely on our auditor for those backups that oversight, and so, since you were an auditor, you're real familiar with all those laws?
Yes, and I also, back in March of this year, I attended the municipal financial managers' course, that was actually the first one that they had, I think it was in Westboro, and it was, it was phenomenal. It was, I mean, honestly, like, I came out of there thinking every, every city department head should take this course.
I'm glad to hear that, because I think we always have new things coming out, especially, I'm glad to hear we're gonna try and unify software, that would be great, whatever that costs, it sounds to me like that would make it so much more efficient.
It is expensive, I mean, it's something we'll look at for fiscal year 2021, but it's, it's a commitment, and the transition, you know, is hopefully smooth, actually, I mean, it's, it's outside of this, but the business manager in the school department has transitioned now twice.
Does the state at all have any things that help with upgrading to munis? Not so much.
Money-wise, you mean?
Yeah.
Grants?
Yeah, an 800 number.
Well, just know this, when I first came here, the first auditor we had did everything on paper.
Yes.
So, we've come a long way. Excel is great compared to that!
Yes, I can relate, I can relate.
The last question I have for you is, I'm chairman also of the CPA Committee, CPAs, I love CPA, it's a big thing for me, and you're real familiar with those laws?
Yes, I actually worked very closely with the community development manager in Westfield, and we were, you know, we, we spoke frequently because people who weren't in CPA all the time had grand ideas about what the money should be used for.
Paving the road.
And, and we, you know, so it was a team effort for me to kind of pull up the laws and say, okay, look, from an auditing standpoint, this is what you have to use these for.
Well, it's great to have you and Val on that. Jamie's very good, she's our assistant planner in CPA, but I'm glad to hear that.
Jane.
Jamie, I said Jamie.
Oh, I thought you said Jane.
I did too.
Okay.
Jamie.
I was like, Jane does CPA?
Well, we moved her up, she, we didn't tell her, did we?
Do you have any questions?
Thank you.
You're welcome, thank you. What is the Massachusetts Bureau of Accounts? Ever heard of them?
The Massachusetts Bureau of Accounts, aren't they the, like, DLS is the branch of them, isn't that what it is?
Commission of Local Services?
Yeah.
Okay.
I don't know what it is.
Look it up. I could go deeper, but I'm not gonna, I'm page 14, okay. And this is just because I saw this as a thing, because sometimes, sometimes there are things.
Over for me?
And maybe this, you know, have we had a need, have you had any experience with tax titles and foreclosures?
Yes.
Okay.
Probably in the banking area, right?
Both, actually. In, definitely in the banking area, but in Westfield, I mean, same thing, the auditing department tracked tax title. Unfortunately, as far as our gas and electric went, they were, they're, they're like quasi-connected kind of, and so, we tracked their tax title liens for them, because they didn't, somewhere along the way, someone lost the list over there. So, they had a number of totals.
It wasn't you, Jamie.
But, no, it wasn't Jamie. So, yes, I am very familiar with tax title and foreclosures. I didn't, you know, in terms of the foreclosures, I did more of the, in auditing, I did more of the journal entry side of things, but having been in banking, I really know the whole process.
So, I see that you, so you went to Westfield State undergrad?
Yes.
And then you got your masters from the Eisenberg School?
Yes.
Which ain't no small thing, so congratulations.
Thank you.
That's pretty impressive.
Your resume is not.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Have you ever managed a staff?
Yes.
In the banking or?
All, yes. In banking, I, in my first credit union job, which I was at for 13 years, it was a small credit union, so it was the CEO, myself, and then everyone else. So, it was more or less, I kind of, you know, did the day-to-day management of all of them. And then, same, like, branding, I oversaw the accounting department at Polish National, and then actually at Westfield, even though I was the assistant auditor, the way that the auditor, when I came in, had it was that I was the office manager. So, I, so all of the staff, which were four other people, you know, came to me and, as a first, you know, a first.
Line of defense.
Yes, I was gonna say that, but I didn't know if that sounded right. And, you know, and then if it had to escalate to the auditor, it did.
Did you, were you responsible for doing their reviews and their?
Yes.
Okay. The whole thing, okay.
We're arguing with that, we can't do that, too.
Working on it.
That's how, that's how it was when I started at Westfield.
Working on it. It's getting there. Okay. Hold on. Nothing?
You guys cooperate.
Joe, anymore?
Well, that's it.
Anyone from the floor?
So, I'm Salem.
Hi.
I'm the city councilor.
Oh, nice to meet you.
So, we have a pretty big organization in East Hampton that is tax exempt.
Oh, jeez.
And I, and there's a lot of, I think there potentially is a lot of opportunity for us to work that relationship a little bit more. And like, and I'm just wondering, you know, I mean, this isn't necessarily fan ice, I think everybody knows the elephant in the room here, but, but, you know, for example, they have a lot of, they have a lot of housing where people live that should probably be on the tax rolls. So, I'm just wondering if, you know, would you be willing to, as the, you know, the treasurer, to be a member of that kind of coalition that would be exploring these types of options?
Is there a coalition?
Is that you and who?
You know, like, if you get a mayor on my side, that would be like.
One less person for the park.
And then also, you know, I think, we've never had to deal with this, but I think it could be something that could potentially be on the horizon at some point in our future, which is like eminent domain, you know, taking a property, and I imagine that the treasurer would be pretty, and I don't know if you've had any experience with that in Westfield?
Yes.
Okay?
Really?
Yes.
That's, that's helpful.
I mean, a little made a joke, it's a very serious question, it brings up, and so I, because you obviously have educational groups in Westfield, or did?
Westfield State.
Was there discussion about pilots and things like that? How did you handle it, or what is the status of that in Westfield?
Well, I mean, it was, it was, the mayor in Westfield is very thorough in trying to look at things from all angles, and by doing that, he, again, would involve the specific department heads, you know, not just the people from school, or the people from, you know, wherever the project was, or the, anything, anything that was gonna, you know, a potential new thing coming down the pike. And, you know, for, for that reason, I mean, I, I always found it very interesting to hear, I mean, even as the assistant auditor, like, when I got there, the auditing department kind of had this reputation that, you know, we just stayed there with our heads down and we crunched our numbers and that was it. And I was under the mentality that, like, I like to learn about what's going on, and I like to know, you know, not only do I want to give my input about how it's gonna affect my department, or how it plays into the regulations that we have to follow, but I like to hear how it's, how it comes from other departments as well. Because I think that there's, one thing I found was, there's a lot of tunnel vision between departments sometimes, you know, where they, they know what they need, and that's what they want, but they don't always understand how it affects some of the other departments, and so I've always tried to kind of, in all of my experience, I've always tried to kind of be, you know, think things through as much as I can from, you know, other departments' point of view, you know, by asking them, by talking to them, and just finding out, you know, hey, this is what we're thinking, but, you know, is it gonna throw a big monkey wrench into, into what your plans are? And, I mean, you know, don't always agree, and sometimes it's, you know, there's not always, there's gonna be somebody always who, who might be a little bent out of shape or didn't, you know, didn't want things to go quite the way they did, but, you know, ultimately, the job is to do the best you can for the taxpaying citizens of the city. And that's where it's at, I think.
And Joe, I don't know if this is where you were going, but I'll re-ask kind of what you were saying. So, have you, in the, in the course of being the assistant city auditor, were you involved in any conversations or processes that might be, might interact with the university such that, the university, I assume, is not paying taxes? So, was there ever any kind of plan, programs, ideas, thoughts around how to bridge the gap between them not paying taxes? So, we have that similar situation, were there any programs that Westfield came up with, or any, anything, that they were able to create an arrangement, agreement, whatever, from Westfield that they would get some sort of a funding?
Right.
What did they call that?
Pilot.
Yes.
That really relates to private education institutions more than anything, unfortunately.
I'll let her answer. I mean, fascinating, but you've already got a job.
Wow, Jo, I'm gonna miss you.
I don't know if she is.
I am. Actually, not, not on the university side of it, but like, for instance, gas and electric, they did, we had a pilot program with them where they didn't pay taxes to the city, they, they were on a pilot program. And there were a few other, off the top of my head, I can't really think of what they were, but there were a few other entities that were exactly the same. So, I'm familiar with it in terms of, you know, finding ways to, you know, get back some of that money, if you will, you know, I think that's a matter of who you're dealing with, you know, and what kind of institution you're dealing with, what, what do they have to offer, you know, because it's gonna be different, I mean, the gas and electric was the gas and electric, you know what I mean? They offered gas and electric, that was pretty much it, you know? So, you know, right, in that respect, you know, so it's kind of, without knowing all of the, you know, the area businesses and people who would be eligible for something with the pilot program, you know, it would, I would base it on what do they have to offer?
Yeah. And I think where Salem was going, again, don't want to assume, but, you know, should you be approved, I think that would be something we might look to you to start to create a relationship, a coalition, if you will, of conversations, coming in new, no history, having those conversations with the provost over there, and just beginning to kind of have, see where it could take us, it's just a thought.
And to me, I mean, that, that's something that I would welcome, I think you can kind of tell, I talk to people easily, I, you know, I, I don't have any problems starting up conversation, and, I mean, and kind of like I was saying, where, you know, you have to ask department heads what they need and that sort of thing, if you don't talk to people and you don't have that conversation, then you don't really know, I mean, who knows if they're... if they're having the same thoughts in some way, shape, or form?
I'm going to go with they're not.
No.
But that's a good place to start, I would say.
Got it.
It's not a thing for them.
Gotcha.
Yeah, that's what I'm going to do.
Okay.
Time is up.
I think that's one other thing that should be said is, we, the mayor and I, this has gone on now for months.
Yes.
And it wasn't, the delay wasn't necessarily finding the right candidate. The mayor and I went through, I don't know how many different scenarios of reorganizing the departments, the whole finance team, what the players we have, the players we need, what if we did this? Then we'd look at it for a while, and then we'd rearrange again, and we'd try something else. One of the biggest issues that came up with each of the scenarios was, in the past, only one person knew a job.
Mm-hmm.
And this is one of the advantages the mayor and I talked about with Jen. She's coming in from an audit standpoint, but she wants to be a treasurer, and she's been on the side of the audit, on the side of the treasurer duties that looked at the problems. So obviously, if she can find the problems, she can do the treasurer duties. Mayor and I went through, we had, there were other candidates. No one met as many of the checklist as Jen. Jen brings a wide variety of experience to the table, that we're hoping with her experience and management skills, she will be able to cross-train employees, so that we don't have the problems that we have now, where, oh, we don't know how to do that.
Things were single-threaded and.
It's, it's been tough, because it's put a lot of pressure on the team.
Yeah.
We have a lot of stressed employees, and it's, it's spreading, and we need to get a new face in to start working with everyone to bring it all together.
Yeah.
It's a team, it's not one person.
I'm a big proponent of that, because you end up with scenarios like we have, if one person knows everything, and we call it in our world getting hit by a bus, but we're leaving, one of the two, what do you do? And you, and you know, if you're going to be good at this, you have to have people who know stuff. And if you're not going to help them get better, you're never going to succeed. So I'm all, I'm all in on that philosophy.
And one of the, one of the biggest things with municipal is the statement, but we've always done it.
Yeah, yeah.
And that's not necessarily, in today's world, with regulations changing and just the world changing, that's not necessarily the best way to do things. So we need someone that is willing to listen, hear everybody out, because maybe it is the best way to keep it that way right now. But we need somebody that's going to come in, listen, weigh all the options, and then say, okay, here's what we're going to do.
Yeah.
We need to set up procedures. We found that there aren't a lot of formal procedures. It's just been, this is the way we've done it. So with each of the different scenarios we went through, we moved people around, we tried to see who would be best suited. I'm a firm believer in promote from within. They've proven their skills, if they have the qualifications and the desire to learn and to do, then we should reward them with potentially a promotion. We found that the collector, Carol earned it. She's been here, she's proven herself, so we moved that. Then it was, okay, we fixed this piece, what are we going to do with this piece? And then I went through all the scenarios again. It's been a long process for us. And it's not just a, let's get somebody in there, because that's not always the best thing to do.
Yeah, I think, I think, you know, I, I will admit that, and I'm just going to be really candid, that I was concerned from, from the heavy banking aspect.
Yes.
But in talking, you know, with the way you just explained it, I think having the knowledge kind of spread among the team as opposed to expecting one person to know everything and everybody else just kind of fall in line, I feel better about that arrangement, because I think that's healthy, and I think that is how you, you get different ideas. People know different things and can do different things. So I like the concept of having people kind of know different things. So, and I'm also not a fan of that's how we've always done it, so.
Clearly.
It has to.
With all due respect.
I helped out, actually, in the space. So, yeah, so, so, yeah, I thank you. You have helped. Jane, you have helped.
Nice closing, Jane.
I really, I really like the fact that, and I think the mayor's done this, is a teamwork kind of attitude towards management across the board. And in the financial sector, although I was in favor of finance director way back when we did it, to try and relieve the fact that we might not have a mayor that has any finance or management skills, because you can elect anybody you want. On the other hand, the teamwork concept to me seems to be better, because you don't have authority stuck on one person, putting a lot of pressure on that person, but also other people may be a little intimidated by wanting to give their advice. So I think team, team management is the way to go, and I like that we're doing that. I'm very happy with that. Anyway, I think we have to go.
Twenty-five minutes.
For appointment, just appointment.
Oh, my God, are you kidding me?
Wow.
Sometimes we just start at 5:30.
Dan's retired, he knows nothing about that.
It's Saturday, isn't it?
That'll be me, please.
She has a great retirement, so it's like, 100 days.
Oh, it's under 150 now, I'm pretty sure.
We have that on our phone. I do not.
I'm sorry, 7,842 days, but that's.
I don't want to put mine on.
So, back to us now. Are you prepared to vote?
Yes.
Okay. I will take a motion to approve Jennifer Calant to, to the position of treasurer with a term expiration of 12/31/2021.
So.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion passes.
We have a form of the council, so we know all the options.
Yeah.
The others are just going to have to stand.
Get in line.
I have one, thank you. There is one, I thought.
Is she on the job now?
No, there isn't. You're right, there is not.
So when did she start?
So we have no meeting.
Monday.
So.
I hate to say this.
All right. All in favor?
Aye. Wednesday.
I'm sorry, we were.